Thank you very much. Well, we're running a relay here and we're making really good time. To bring us in on our final leg, I want to do a handoff to the moderator for our speakers, for our candidates forum. The A Professor Emeritus from SIU Carbondale, Dr. Mary Pullman. Dr. Pullman?
Thank you, Kareem. There are nine candidates for three seats on the Carbondale City Council. All candidates were invited to participate and seven responded. Each candidate present today will have four minutes to express their thoughts on issues impacting Carbondale neighborhoods and the role the Carbondale City Council can play in addressing such issues. We will hear from the candidates in the following order. First, Mr. Nathan Columbo, then Ms. Ginger Rice Sanders, then current Councilman Jeff Dougherty, then Mr. Melvin Pepperholder, then current Councilwoman Jessica Bradshaw, then Mr. Nick Smalago, and finally, current Councilwoman Carolyn Harvey. Candidates, please mute yourself until you're called upon to speak. Mr. Columbo, you may unmute and speak now.
Absolutely. Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for being on this call or watching this from Facebook through the library's Facebook page. This type of activity here and everything that we've seen expressed by the folks that have represented our community organizations and the city of Carbondale are exactly why I'm seeking a council seat, because this is the type of work that I want to be involved in. I think it was just earlier that used the phrase pollinator. David Brooks with the New York Times uses the phrase weaver. I think that is something that I'm wanting to be, is somebody that connects all of the activity that you've heard here and all of the relationships that I have really play to that, you know, with the folks that are here. In terms of our neighborhoods and what we want to address, really, it's having neighbors, right? Carbondale's issue over the past couple of decades has been population decline, namely due to declining enrollment at SIU, but that gives us an opportunity to open up different avenues to address, you know, filling the houses next door with people that we can welcome into the community that we've just expressed is so wonderful and vibrant that we need to have folks involved in. So I think there is an opportunity right now to set our city forth as the city of refuge in America in a time of climate change and natural disasters occurring not just throughout the globe, but right here in our backyard in the USA. You know, seeing folks that are fleeing wildfires in California or hurricanes in the Gulf Coast or some of the most recent issues that we've seen, like the winter weather in Texas, right? That displaces folks and puts them on a path to land somewhere that is going to be safe for the future. And we are a community that is going to be safe for the future. Reason being, again, there are so many folks doing so many kinds of work that intertwine so well that we can provide a sustainable, livable future. And a big driver in that, as you've heard from a number of organizations and from the city itself, is that the city is both a policy standard in building that life as well as, you know, an actual functional staff-led effort to make these things happen. So I've eaten up a lot of my time on the introduction here, but some of the things that were asked about that weren't referenced directly in the opening of this conversation was talking about COVID response and transportation to get vaccinated, cooperation and coordination with park management between the city and the park district, and police issues, including community policing and the proposed Northeast substation at the Irma Hayes Center, right? As far as COVID response, we've done a wonderful job getting shots and arms, and that's because we have a number of community partners, right? I wish that we would have had a little bit more teeth in enforcing some of the policies we set forth for our community, because we had some folks that didn't take public health crisis as seriously as we should have. But, you know, ultimately, I think that shook out okay. In terms of the cooperation between the park district and the city of Carbondale, I've got relationships with key players in all roles on all sides of the issue. And I think simply being in the room to have that tough conversation as a city council person would be welcome. And in terms of our police department, right, I think our main issue, right, is we sit here and say that we want to have community policing, but we don't have police that actually live in our community. I think that's a concern, that especially when searching for a new police chief, that we need to address of how do we actually have the folks that are supposed to be servicing our community be in our community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Columbo. Now we'll hear from Ginger Rice Sanders.
Ginger, you're muted. We can't hear you. You're still muted. You're still muted. Jennifer, can you offer her some assistance, maybe?
Okay. I am on, I am on the telephone. I'm on the telephone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on the phone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, but you need to sit in front of your camera so we can see you.
Well, if there's going to be, when I was sitting in front of the camera, you could not hear me. I'm having technical difficulties with my camera, so I just want to get my message across, if that's okay. I think everybody's seeing me sitting. My name is Ginger Rice Sanders. I'm a mother of four, grandmother of 22. I attended Carbondale Elementary School and graduated from Carbondale High School. I attended John A. Logan and was elected for the Student Senate and was elected also for the Student Trustee of John A. Logan College. I received a bachelor's degree from University of Illinois in Business Management, and my family were members of Rock Hill Baptist Church under the tutelage of Reverend Linus Turley, a champion for civil rights. There we learned to hope against hope, to hope for a better tomorrow. And in dark times, and there were plenty of dark times, I remember when I was very, a teenager, very excited about going to the varsity theater because our parents weren't really excited about us going, but I did go, only to arrive and to find out that blacks were allowed to sit in the balcony in an excluded place and use the restroom in another part of the building. Even today, when I pass the varsity theater, I can still be reminded of the residue of racism. In spite of all of that, I hope for a better tomorrow. As a young woman, I worked with the Model Cities Program, citizen participation, the Board of Directors, was Northeast Congress with the President Margaret Nesbit. I am a product of Carbondale. And I stand on the shoulders of great teachers and preachers and community activists in Carbondale, those who advocated for good education, good change, good jobs, economic growth, and the importance of community relations, those who had bold voices and did not fold under pressure, but they spoke out against the issues that so plagued our city, and so will I do the same. It is time for change. I stand at the core of my platform on diversity, inclusion, equality, and equity. And I did have pictures, and they say a picture is worth a thousand words, but I have been told that they couldn't do the pictures. But one of my biggest concerns is with diversity and with the employment in the city of Carbondale. When I see that the city of Carbondale hires 19% minority and 42% minorities are in the population, that's a problem with disparity. When police officers operate at 93% whites and whites only make up 58% of the population, there is disparity in Carbondale. We are, we are drowning, city of Carbondale, in disparities. And I would like to let you know that I'm not comfortable, and I hope you aren't comfortable. If you are comfortable and you think that it's okay, that means that this kind of posture leads us down the path of more moral bankruptcy. But I stand on the fact that I do want to run, because I am from the Women for Change, and I am, I want to run because I want to make sure that things change in Carbondale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Our next speaker is Councilman Jeff Dougherty.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. And thank you to everyone who's organized and participated in this event. It's people like you is why I really love Carbondale. And events like this bring out the efforts of everyone making, trying to make Carbondale a better place to live. I am Jeff Dougherty. I'm a candidate for reelection to the city council. A little background about myself, I came to Carbondale in 1971 as a college freshman at SIU. I received two degrees as part of my master's, a public administration program. I did an internship with the city of Carbondale that led to a 32-year career with the city, including a 16 as city manager. I retired from the city in 2008 and then served as Executive Director of the Jackson Growth Alliance, which is a county-wide economic development organization. And I did that until 2017, when I was elected to the Carbondale City Council. Serving on the city council has been a very rewarding experience. I enjoy public service and I enjoy my time on the city council. Our current city council works well together as a team in the policymaking of moving Carbondale forward. One initiative we're working on right now is the creation of a residential tax increment financing district or TIF districts. This has been mentioned earlier, similar to the TIF districts in our downtown for commercial. The goal is to rehabilitate our central core neighborhoods by giving incentives to upgrade the existing housing stock, encourage homeownership, and improve the neighborhoods. We are targeting areas in northeast, northwest, and the southwest parts of town. Another initiative is exploring the merging of operations between the city and the Carbondale Park District. The goal is to provide the Carbondale community the best parks and recreation facilities possible. The quality of our parks is, has a direct impact on the quality of our neighborhoods and the overall quality of life in Carbondale. The past year, the city has assumed the maintenance and operation of Linus Turley Park and Tatum Heights Park. And I think anyone who has driven by or gone into those parks and enjoyed them will agree that the city has addressed many of the deferred maintenance issues in those parks and made them more attractive and usable for... In the past month, the city, or in the past month, there's been much discussion about the Irma C. Hayes Center and how the community can best utilize this asset. And it is an asset to our community. One suggestion has been having some type of police presence at the center. I do not support this idea. We've had, we've tried police substations in the past, and they were little, with little effectiveness. But I can see some type of city presence. When I was city manager, we provided our Community Relations Officer an office there and served about half of their time in that office, giving the Community Relations Officer help people in all aspects, including employment opportunities. So I think the city can have some presence there, but really, I believe that the community as a whole must come together to fully utilize the center, the neighborhood, the city, healthcare schools, community groups, and so on. So there's new ownership, that ownership at the Hayes Center, and I think we need to take advantage of it. Quickly, the city has a lot of impacts in various ways in neighborhoods from code enforcement, effective community policing, and so on. And I thank you for your time. Good day.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Our next speaker is Mr. Melvin Pepperholder.
You're good? Oh, hello?
Mr. Holder.
I am here.
Please speak.
Speaking. My name is Melvin Holder, preferably called Pepper. Most people in my community know me as Pepper. There was a period of my experience coming up in Carbondale, it's maybe very, somewhat different from many others. Let me get this thing off. Carbondale and the church community, it was a place of seemingly, there was much expression of how to go forth and how to do better. Those nurturing the kids, which I was one and Ginger was one, and many others, that love that was felt from not just Rock Hill, where I was raised at, or just in school. My neighbor was Miss Thelma Walker. She was a Sunday school teacher. She was my park attendant. She was also a school teacher. So there was that neighborhood community where someone was always present in your life. Now then Reverend Turley, Reverend Mosley in Bethel Church, Bethel's where I went to kindergarten. It was U L.A. students, I had a program, but that served us at Bethel Church as kindergarten until we got to the first grade and time of school. During those times, with that comfort of peace of being in your community and the wishes of the people in your community at home to go forth and do better in a time where there was so much against the general population of black people, persons of color. There were a number of white people who were helpful, who were, these people were seeing where things had been going wrong and how could it possibly make it better. And in recent years, that is something I have not seen. Reverend Turley, Reverend Mosley, Reverend Mosley received a gold medal from Obama for his participation in World War II at Monford Point. And then there were people in the, in the, in ACP that wouldn't even attend his honor, and him for his, for bankrupt was posted for him. That type of stuff needs to cease. We've got problems that are not being addressed, not being acknowledged. And until these people rise up, like Burdenbaum, who was very much a part of the labor thing, the labor issues in Carbondale, they were a lot better than they are now. When I was, when I was at WDBX, I used to say, this is Pepperholder, WDBX 91.1, Community Radio, South, North, 24 North to be South, 24 South to be North, except that I found we were worse off here than Mississippi. And I've been there. And so Lois Sumner, Willie Lawson, two black people who was really helpful. There was Dr. Marsh, who really helped my parent business. And in that business, traveling all over the country and seeing things, I say, I wonder why can't we have some of these better things that I find in other places in Carbondale? And that's still just a question.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilwoman Jessica Bradshaw.
Hey, thank you, Mary, and thank you, everyone, for tuning in and joining us this morning. This Neighborhood Alliance meeting is always one of my favorite winter events. I get so energized hearing what all of our wonderful organizations and amazing community leaders have been busy doing, even this year, despite the you-know-what. For those who don't know me, my name's Jessica Bradshaw, and I've been on the city council for eight years now. I like to say that I first became involved in local politics when I was a conservation cat at Lincoln Junior High School. More recently, though, I work as an office administrator at SIU, and I will soon graduate from the SIU Public Administration Program. When I first looked over my campaign materials from four years ago, I had to laugh at how simple everything seemed back then. I mean, what would you say if, what would you say to yourself if you knew where we'd be now? Four years ago, we were busy preparing for the solar eclipse. And to think about how I felt then versus how I feel now, it just, I get goosebumps. It feels weird to talk about things like business development or bringing back vibrancy to downtown life when most people are struggling to keep their jobs or homes. It feels weird and gross to think about all those people at Sunset Concerts now, but I also really missed it this summer. For the city council, we still have to deal with some of the same issues that we always do, pandemic or not, and some are even more challenging now, as we heard from the city manager, like the budget, as well as helping our local businesses, organization, and low-income folks. We are still working on the merger with the park district, and hopefully that will save everyone some money and lead to more enjoyable parks and green spaces, since we all need that these days. There's also the issue of policing in the community, but I expect you'll be hearing more about that at the next two debates, so I'm kind of leaving that for then. I do hope that all of our fabulous community organizations continue to work together and create better spaces for everyone to enjoy inside and out, pandemic or no. We have a pretty awesome, unique community here, and nothing shows that better than what has happened over the last year with efforts like the Southern Illinois Collaborative Kitchen, the Warming Center, becoming more than just a warming center, and places like the Varsity, Carbondale Main Street, and the library, learning how to adapt what they do and go virtual. So I know we're all tired of hearing this, but we will get back to doing things, quote-unquote, "normally." Again, things will change. We will get to see each other again in person, but I'm just so glad that I get to serve and live in a community like ours. And I hope that you will vote for me so I can continue to do that on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw. Our next speaker is Mr. Nick Smalago. Nick?
Hi, thank you. And I'm sorry I don't have video access right now. I'm Nick, the Carbondale Spring, the platform that I advocate, and which Beau had so nicely summarized, is a development strategy based on a serious acknowledgement of the ecological, social, and economic challenges that we face. If we embrace these challenges, Carbondale will become a magnet for people who want to build a better world, because it will give them hope. And working on it with people in this town has given me hope, and that's why I'm running. We want to fund this shift in our development through reducing the oversized police force and rejecting the strategy of community policing that's used to justify its size. In practice, community policing has grown by defunding direct community services like those out of the Irma Hayes Center, and I should also mention cutting of the Community Relations Officer who had enforced the affirmative action policy of the city back in 2010. Both of those things were cut from the period of 2009 to 2011, saving the city $612,000 to try to fill a $5.8 million deficit, but it didn't do any of that filling, because during that same period, the police budget increased by $618,000. This was all from the general fund, and literally, the money was just transferred from direct services to the community into policing. This has made us, and this has made us in the Northeast neighborhood less safe. We need to reassume our responsibility as a city for directly funding community programs, and we need the police to have a smaller, not a larger, role. Community policing does not mean that the police live in or look like the community. It is a misleading term, and it's nothing new. It's not going to heal any divides. It's not going to make anyone safer, because community policing is a part of the policing paradigm that we have now. And that paradigm, what it does is it inserts the police into more and more aspects of life. For 50 years, this has led to countless murders, episodes of brutality, mass incarceration, and militarization. But in moments like this, after police murders have led to uprisings, community policing is brought out as if it is the solution. But that's the role it plays in protecting all the other parts of the current policing paradigm. It turns criticism of the police into an expansion of their power. It also divides the community against itself by dismissing voices critical of the police as if they are not really part of the community. Healing the relations between police and community requires a new paradigm. We could call it minimal policing. The police should be there when they are called upon to be there, not be there when they are not, and a variety of other municipal services and community groups should be well-funded and available for situations when a badge and a gun is not needed. This will build trust between the police and the community, because trust requires boundaries, and we can't heal a conflict by further inserting an institution that has caused so much harm in people's lives. Now, I've tried to discuss this with the city council, but I've learned something. The city council is a machine for deflecting real discussion and debate. When you bring something to them that is unfamiliar or evokes a strong feeling, there is no space made for serious back-and-forth discussion, which is what the truth needs in order to emerge. It's no wonder that civic participation is so low. The problem is bigger than the individuals on council. It is related to the council system that does not represent different constituencies within the city. Council members aren't elected by precinct, which means that a few well-mobilized and wealthy precincts can have a disproportionate influence on the council and their perspective. To change this, we should explore a modified ward system where delegates at a neighborhood level would report to assemblies in that neighborhood. These neighborhood assemblies would be open to any resident to attend and discuss matters of concern in their area of the city, and then it would be the responsibility of the delegate to bring city-level problems up to the city. If you want to learn more about that, you can check out my Facebook page. I'm going to be doing an Ask Me Anything next week. And if you're ready to build the town the 21st century needs, then reach out to me and vote for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smalago. Our final speaker is Councilwoman Carolyn Harvey.
Good morning. I want to thank the Carbondale Public Library, the organizers, the participants, and the citizens who have tuned in to this event. Thank you so much. I do miss the chili and the soup, though. I think Carbondale is a great place to live. I've lived here for 50 years. I met my husband here, bought a home here, raised both of my children here, and retired from SIU. I have no plans of leaving Carbondale. I've been involved in many school, church, social, and civic organizations, often in a leadership role. As a result of my opportunities to serve the community as a volunteer, I have gained experience working with and on a team. We have many issues facing us as a community, including COVID and the COVID response and transportation to get vaccinated, cooperation and coordination of park management between the city and the park district, the police department issues, including community policing and the proposed Northeast Police Substation Resource Center. I understand the budget process and the importance of responsibly managing and maintaining a balanced budget and the fiscal solvency of the city. I know that I won't have the answer to every problem, but I believe together we can find solutions. As a council member, I will continue to voice your concerns and serve you. I ask for your support. I ask for your support. My name is Carolyn Harvey. I'm number one on the ballot, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harvey.
She's good.
I would like to thank all of our candidates for participating in this Zoom presentation. The 2021 Consolidated General Election takes place on Tuesday, April 6. The early voting, depending on where you look, you might find different information about this, but you might call the Jackson County Courthouse because I have heard that early voting is already taking place. There will also be early voting at Civic Center on two dates in March and at the Student Center on two other dates in March. But be sure you all go to vote either in early voting, or by mail-in, or the April 6 election. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Pullman, thank you so kindly. Look here, this train has just pulled into the station. I won't labor with you anymore. I just want to leave you with one final thought, and this is for everyone that's listening. Remember, one good turn gets most of the